We call this April 1st, 2018 work session to order. Real call, Mr. Manning.
Mr. Ridge?
Present.
Mr. Venable?
Present.
Ms. Gilbert?
Present.
Mr. Sis?
Present.
Chairman?
Present.
I have reification by Mr. Porter and a pledge from Mr. Venable.
Honorable Father in heaven, we look around us this day and every day, we see the beauty that we get to live in. We're thankful for that. It's changing the season, the flowers are blooming, and the sun is shining today. We're thankful for that. We're thankful of the people of this county. We're thankful for those that choose to serve in public office, whether elected or appointed or as employees. We're just so thankful that they've given their time and their effort to better their community. We pray you'll watch over us and guide us every day. Christ with me. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our all.
Next, we'll need to approve our agenda for our meeting.
I'm Michael Mosser.
Give it a second. All present say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have no awards presentation. No one signed up to speak. First discussion item being board de-legalization. We only had one person on our list, that was Lorraine Holmes. If I don't have any objection, we'll put her on the list for next week. Be approved for next week. Next be Paint Rock Valley School. People would like to be on the board. Has everybody had a chance to look at the list?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody got any comments?
I've had a number of phone calls, which may be over there in the area, at school there, that people in the community, and I think Ms. Prince has probably contacted you also to them. She has me several times. I think she spoke with Mr. Porter about getting with the churches over there, which she already has made arrangements. And certain, certain day, I think she said here, I can't remember what the timeframe was, which Sunday she was talking about, to bring this together and let the community elect a board from some of these names that were presented here. I told her I would bring it up, and we probably followed with that, if that was okay with the rest of commissioners.
Well, I told her that this body would have to be one to approve it, but I told her that I would be happy to present it to this body by Monday, but the vote would be taking place next Monday. Because this was the work session today, and then next Monday would be the vote. So as long as she didn't get it here by Monday, you know, the commission could look at it.
Her suggestions.
Yeah, her suggestions. Does anybody give it any thought to how many, what, how many people this commission would like to have on this board?
I think no more than five. I mean, it's hard enough getting us five together at different times.
I agree. I think with five, we'd need money. To get five should be the most.
I'm for continuing, just like we set out to do, you know, we were approached by the school board to establish this, and I don't think we need to give her from the way that we planned on doing it. I think we need to, next week, take nominations and get this done and be done with it.
Well, is that okay if she goes ahead and has the church? People that want to come up and vote on these names, she won't know, can I bring a copy back? Because the people were very unhappy. They said they were treated like children, the whole valley was there. They said, they don't understand why we couldn't, as a commission board, go ahead and accept it that night. And I said, hey, I'm just one, but I will present your case.
I'd be happy to see their suggestions.
Do they find with the list that we've got now, I mean, do they want to add more people to it?
They didn't really know all that was on there. They wanted to know, could I get the names? And I told them this, I would bring a copy of it.
They've had almost seven months, Mr. Sis, to do something, and they've not done anything. And I hate to continue to just kick the can down the road. I think we need to make nominations next week, lay five people on board and just...
I don't think that would be okay after next Sunday right there, if they all look at these names and what they're asking. Can they make the nominations, you know? Could they do it, you know? They said, they felt like that they should be the ones, since it was over their best interest, and the commission did not have any idea of what was taking place. And I told them, I said, I don't have no problem with that there, myself. I said it really was put on us, and we shouldn't have ever been by the Board of Education, in my opinion, you know?
How do you determine who gets to vote? How many people votes? And if somebody's not there to vote, I mean, I just don't think that's a good way to do it, personally.
All parties and all interests being, this could just be one group and one, their idea of what needs to be done. I want all parties or all areas of the valley to be represented.
I would like to see this succeed, and, you know, if we put the wrong people on there, and they can't get along, and they can't work with the school board and with the commission, then it's going to have a very slim chance of succeeding. So I would say that we need to continue what we've laid out plans to do, personally.
Mr. Ridge?
I'm for just going ahead, just like we planned, the original itself.
Ms. Gilbert?
Me too, sir.
All right. We'll head moving on for next week to go forward for nominations. Number three being the DHR lease agreement. The reason it's being brought up again is we've already got an agreement in place for the, for this year. DHR has just requested that we do a long-term agreement. So basically, I don't think this is for, is for, they're just requesting for us to do a long-term agreement. They just want us to get a long-term agreement in place for them. So we just need to get it, get it prepared and ready to vote on next week.
Now, when you're speaking of long-term, you're talking about until the end of this fiscal year?
We've got one for this, okay.
So this is the carry-on after October?
Yes.
We had done typically five-year leases, when we were forward, had done two at a high rate and three at a discounted rate for 25 years.
So this is the...
Over in August, so they want something, I would assume another five-year lease agreement.
Well, I don't, by looking at the place, and I know some of the rest of you have been there too, but the contract they've had, I don't feel like they've really fulfilled it all the way, because the roof has not had any kind of maintenance, the pressure board is getting pretty bad shape. And I think that needs to be addressed, however we go about this decision part otherwise.
I'm fine with moving forward with the current, the mail, for a five-year lease. This is brought up previously, some concerns about the roof and stuff. And I think before we would offer a with-maintenance agreement, that we would need to inspect the building and see what needs to be done before we move forward with a maintenance agreement.
Well, I think even before we move, move forward with a, with an agreement.
Period.
Period. I think we need to have a maintenance board, just make sure that everything, maintenance is being done properly. Then it may be, but I think we need to just make sure, make it sure to the taxpayer a dollar.
Is that the original roof that's on it now?
I'm not sure.
Is there a way that we can, like, keep check on it better? Because I don't think there's been anything in place to where it's quarterly, annually, biannually?
I think it'd be in our best interest, we start doing maybe quarterly inspection with our maintenance guys, just to make sure.
That's in food structure and, say, the restrooms?
Not just mainly the structure, HVAC, roof, uh, area.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that it would be helpful to have an inspection. I don't know that we need that before we make the tender of five-year lease, the cut rate, but before one is signed, we certainly have to go. I think everybody would go have somebody look at it, because they are responsible for the roof, keeping it in good shape, the pressure board, the electricity, plumbing, the HVAC, as you know, there are all kinds of things that you can do to make sure that the HVAC system continues to operate, changing the filters, for one thing.
Right.
Make sure they're doing these kind of things, because it belongs to us, it belongs to government, and they're supposed to maintain it. So all that inspection.
Right. Okay. If everybody's okay, we'll just move on in that direction then next week? Okay. All right, number four is HCM2, official with Public Works, grade five. Mr. Kim?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. In your fog, hopefully you have a later date in March 2019. On that date, interviews were conducted at Public Works, and a selection was made from that committee to fill that position.
Everybody good for that on lease meeting?
Yes, sir.
It'll be fine. Number five, is a three-month employee contract for mapper, right? Mr. Arnold, you want to discuss that?
No, we lost our chief mapper, and he left, went somewhere else. So we haven't had time to hire a mapper yet. So when we do get one, it's going to take a while. I mean, it takes us a few years to train a mapper, really, completely. So, but Mr. Tyler has agreed to come in on the weekends and keep the name changes, the maintenance, keep doing stuff like that. Some, probably Saturday afternoons, nights, but when we do hire a new mapper, he's going to come in too and train on the weekends. The new mapper will just get comp time. I don't pay him any overtime, nothing like that, we'll just give him comp time. But I want to pay Mr. Tyler, I think, $7.50 a month, is fair.
Yeah.
You know, that's, you know, to keep, just to keep us up to date until we, until at least we can get somebody trained. And I'm asking for three months. And it may take longer than that, but in three months, we'll revisit it, see if we need to go further with it.
Okay. All right. It's okay with the mission, we'll put that on next meeting. Any other questions? All right, number six, be a mapper acquisition with revenue commission. You want, you got any discussion?
We just said we interviewed an in-house person, and they offered them a job, and they said they'd take it. So just asking to refer to the transfer.
If anybody's going to have, we'll put that on this week's.
Have you already posted this job externally?
Yeah, but because the timing of it, he was offered the job, and he told me he would take it, and then something, something come up, and he changed his mind, said he wouldn't take it. So the next day, I advertised it, but then that same day, he called back and said, he changed his mind again, said he would take it. So we had already advertised, we'd already sent it to the paper, we couldn't get it back.
Somebody internally took it.
You don't think we should go ahead with seeing who turns your applications, I mean?
No, because we won't find nobody disqualified.
Court HR, just see if it's somebody internally will, will let you.
I don't think we're going to have to, but we posted the job, and I hate to post the job externally and then...
Not take, take...
Take applications. And if we hadn't posted it, it would have been fine. But I mean, it's posted.
According to the county's HR, I mean, according to your own policies, we don't have to do that. I mean, I understand your...
Have to, but a lot of things you don't have to do, it ain't right and wrong. I mean, I'm just going to feel right, posting a job publicly and not accepting application.
Well, we are, they're, they're accepting applications now, but, I mean, we've already offered this guy the job. We're not going, I don't think, I don't think we'll find anybody as qualified, as qualified as this person. But, I mean, it was just a lateral transfer, an in-house transfer.
Is anybody else applying forward?
Yeah, I'm sure we've got some applications. I'm sure we have.
If we put it off two weeks and let you review those applications, would that be a situation?
You know, I asked this before, when I found out a month ago that I was losing this mapper. It's a very critical part of my office, and it just keeps getting pushed back more, pushed back more, and pushed back more. I need this person here now. I need him here now, training. You know, we don't have a mapper, period, right now.
I understand.
So two more weeks, this puts us two more weeks, but... I asked that advertising be pulled, but it was, they told me it was too late. They told me they'd done, sent it to the paper, and it had to advertise.
Should be able to move forward. Move forward that next Monday.
How are we moving forward with it? Moving forward to sell Patrick? Is that what we're doing, or?
Yeah.
We got a nomination.
No, well, I feel he's qualified up there, he's a man, he's a...
I just, again, I agree with Mr. Venable that, you know, that we don't at least...
I can understand if we're going forward right there, but you know, we're in need of a mapper. I think now is time to move forward with it.
Are we legally moving forward from this one?
Mr. Ridge?
I believe we need to move forward, get it done.
Okay. Reports from staff. Mr. Manning?
Done, thank you.
Mr. Kim?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to report on the sale of our large triaxle dump trucks, the heavy-duty trucks we operate. As you all know, they go to auction in the spring, March 29 auction. Just as a review, the purchase price on those were about $120,000 for the cabin chassis and about $23,000 for the bodies. We rented three of those trucks, and that brought the total to $429,705. They went to auction minus a 6% fee at the auction, which was negotiated down, as you recall. The sale price was $443,82061, which I believe we received a check to that amount. So that was about $14,000 to the good, um, if you purchase them a year's operation and then sell the trucks. So just wanted to update, update you all on the totals.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
This Saturday, we begin our women's firearms classes. We use this room, and this request from the commission, we still be allowed to do that. And I'll have to put the tables in here for Saturday, and then if it'd be okay to use your screens, we'd have to bring another one in here.
Yeah. If I get Ross in a minute, trying to get this lineup for you. All right. Uh, Mr. Ridge?
Yes, back, going back to the Paint Rock Valley School Board, the list, the names, that Cassie Lynn, isn't it, isn't it Lynn? I just want to make sure I have that correct.
How you spell it?
L-Y-O-N-S, Lynn.
Spell it again.
L-Y-O-N-S, Mr. Sis, sir.
Okay. I'm sure you're great.
Other than that, I'm glad to be here.
Mr. Venable?
Please, those guys out here, to take one hand to help with it. I spent a little bit of time thinking of this stuff, and got Mr. Manning, and got some numbers, and I just wanted everybody to be prepared. We start our 2020 budget cycle, which is be here before you know it. These things is what I come up with, is what we're down to. If anybody can add to this list, please do so. But, you know, we're looking at between $500,000 and $700,000 budget deficit in the general fund. So some combination of this or any new ideals is what we're going to have to look at, to take $500,000 to $700,000 off the general fund budget. And I just, I said, this is just the stuff that I can think of. And anybody got any questions on any of it, or got any other ideals, you know, please jot them down, get Mr. Manning, because we can establish a dollar amount to those ideals. And we've got some other issues coming up. That's all I've got. Let's see, but any questions on your comment?
Just real quick, insurance. Remember, our insurance went up last year? Again, that was only my second time doing a budget. Does that happen every year, like insurance on retirees? Is that something that we're facing, that we will not know until summer or late summer?
It gives a song almost every year. I don't know of a year that I've been here that we haven't had at least a small increase. But these are current numbers.
Okay.
And some of this stuff is rounded off. But our retired health insurance, you know, costs us $355,000 a year. That is an obligation. And this stuff is not what I'm suggesting we do. I'm just saying, these are the things that we're down to. But it costs us $355,000 a year to pay the retired health insurance. But that is an obligation that those people worked under, and I feel like they're owed. But again, we have to balance the budget. And it's the same thing with employee health insurance. Right now, we pay 100% of employee health insurance, and you can see what that costs us. So do we want to start making employees pay 10%, 20%, you know, a percentage of their healthcare insurance? Payroll, that's 5% number on all payroll, and then the retirement that goes into that 5%, and the FICA that goes into that 5%, makes up about $480-plus thousand, $491,000. You know, that's all employees. Do we want, you know, go to a 38-hour working? That would get us 5% of our payroll obligation. And I've got numbers for 10%. But I said, this is the stuff that we're down to. We've cut everything else that I know of that can be cut. And again, if any of you can come up with any new ideals or other ideals on things that can be cut out, that wouldn't hurt like some of these are going to hurt, let's please explore those ideals before June or July, when we start working on our 2020 budget cycle.
Say here, I mean, there's, there's nothing here that we really actually could...
This school resource officers, is that a refund to this by the Board of Education?
There is.
Yes, but that's just, we're...
Putting in some numbers.
Yeah, it's, well, it's got payroll, because last time that we cut payroll, we cut courthouse payroll. We didn't cut Public Works and sanitation and park and other entities, because they had money to support themselves. So that's why I had to bother to list out the different payrolls in this other chart. Because if we just want to do courthouse security, then it's not going to be that $391,000. You have to come down here and see what you're going to do on commission, building maintenance, and courthouse security, that kind of stuff, and then do your own math over here to see what kind of dollars that would yield. But again, we're looking at between 5 and 7. Is that a pretty accurate number, Mr. Manning? Between 5 and 700,000, depending on however revenue flows out?
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like it is going to be a very accurate number.
Well, we don't have to look across it, like you said, because as far as, you know, we talked about employees right there. I don't, I don't want to have to charge them in insurance, bringing up as any way of order, because I'm, I'm hearing so much that we're losing so many employees, because our insurance is higher than other surrounding places, you know?
I agree 100%. But again, you know, we've got now a little over a million dollars in bank. You're talking about operating for two years under the way we're, you know, if we continue in the status quo, we can operate maybe two years without being completely depleted of capital.
Not even two years.
Not even two years, depending on the 5 to 7, you know. So I, I, I don't want to make any of these cuts. I think every bit of this, and I, and I think our employees deserve more. I mean, they've got one 3% raise in six years, and now we're talking about possibly having to cut their hours by 5%. I mean, that's not fair, and it's not right, but we have to balance the budget. So the stuff that we're going to have to look at...
We've lost 18 employees since October 1st of this year, and it's probably about to average for the past couple of years. We've probably moved to 35 people a year. I'd say 18 since October 1st.
Since October 1st.
And, and most of those, a lot of those are not just entry-level, I mean, like our chief mapper and stuff like that. I mean, we're losing people that it's hard to replace.
There is.
Ms. Gilbert?
No, sir.
Mr. Sis, anything?
Yes, I know that we have fought these issues and things, and this litter control deal that was going on down the county line, Madison County line and Jackson County, it is getting kind of out of hand. I would like to ask, get more on board and see if we can get with sanitation department and, and with Public Works, Johnson, and get in there and clean this up. So they've dumped in two more mattresses and about a half dozen tires this past weekend. It's, it's going to have to be fixed up. Another thing, too, that I want us to get back on, which April 1st is here today, we started it back in February, I think, was the poli places. I know Kathy was wanting this done by February. We've kind of skipped over it when we had it on the table, and we need to kind of approach that, because that's going to be a savings to us, if we can change those poli places, help out. So that's, that's basically all I have.
We hadn't forgotten, but after I relooked at the rules on it, we didn't have to get it done as quick as what we thought. So with our budget, the way it is of trying to get some of these other more pressing issues fixed, we'll, we'll make sure to revisit those in the next 30 days. We'll try to get them back on there, and get those taken care of. So we'll try to get these budget issues worked out, and then we'll try to get that taken care of.
While I'm on that, Mr. Manning, Jonathan, there's any procedures we did go through for this trash? I mean, you talked one time before about you carrying a piece of equipment down there, and if we can get the sanitation department, and I'm there, I would say something about carrying a roll-off.
Yeah, the last time I'd seen it, it was a large, large amount of material, so I assumed we would need, you know, some, some, something, some means of loading it, which we could, we could provide, I'm sure. I think, I think, and I don't, you know, I'm not an expert on any of this, but I would probably advise 8M regulation on land filling on-site. I think there, there, there are laws against land filling on-site as a property owner, individual property owner, especially as it would present problems for sanitation for general public and harm in that way. So I would, I would probably suggest a notification to that landowner, and Mr. Porter may want to weigh in on this, given some sort of timeline, whether to have it cleaned up or cleaned up themselves, or we will take action and, and charge, or we cook our costs accordingly, so.
If I understood Mr. Porter correctly, did you, could you state what you said about that before?
Yes, sir. We, we attempted to address this issue several years ago, and tried to find the landowner. We were not able to find him at that time. And at that time, the health department was involved in it and was not pursued further, let's just put it that way. But we can pursue it further. He does need, before we go on private property, we need to give him notice, and then as Mr. Kim was says, give him an option to clean it up himself, or we're going to do it and tax it back to him, put a lien on his property.
Put a lien on his property.
Put a lien on his property for that cost.
If I understand, right, the landowner lives in Illinois, somewhere there, far away.
I think we need to, with this on next week's agenda, to send the gentleman a letter, and, and within thirty days or whatever. Like before, several, couple years ago, we tried to contact, and, you know, it's continued, 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 we need to do something about it, and he needs to do something about it.
If I can, if I may, y'all are referring to, that's, it's advertised in the paper for sale right now, on the tax sale. So as of, as of today, the taxes haven't been paid, so it'll sell April 30th at the tax sale, if the taxes aren't paid. But it's already been advertised with appropriate judge's office and in the paper. But it's already been advertised with appropriate judges' office and in the paper.
Yeah, so y'all have tried to communicate with the contact, and I'm sure they're trying to get payment on taxes.
Yeah.
For whatever reason, they've come hard to get a...
Thank you.
As far as I know, I mean, we haven't heard, we've sent certified letters, we've done everything we know to do. So as of now, it'll sell at the tax sale.
I can't tell you his name, I'll let you up to order.
Yes, same.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anything else? They're going to make a motion, can they get a motion, Mr. Jern?
I'm going to motion with Jern.
I'll say it.
Say hi. I want to vote.
Camera is rolling on this. The, y'all had mentioned, Jason had mentioned, there was a, about sixty days ago, there was two million dollars in the general fund account now today. You mentioned there's one million dollars in the fund account, is that pretty much accurate? So within the past sixty days, just an idea of how that money was, was spent? Or what are, are there some, is it on the roads, is it?
Uh, Mr. Manning?
You go ask money question, you're better than ask them. I can hear what the question was, I was listening to them talk.
You're explaining to Mr. Morgan, how our fund is now, like, just over a million dollars, up to two million dollars.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago...
Oh!
Yeah, the, the camera's rolling on us now, all right? I don't want to be up front about that. The, all right, about sixty days ago, there was a comment made, I asked a question. So it's what I'm asking is what was expended between, like, six weeks ago, two months ago, and today's date, to where there's a million left in the general fund account?
School admin fee, it was like eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. I'll have to look it up to be exact, but that was refunded.
So, so the difference in the two million in the current fund amount, is school admin fees refunded?
We would have believed that we could retain five percent of two cents of sales taxes collected. When we had our audit, the auditors told us that we could not retain that. We could pay it back, and it would not be able to audit find it.
Which year? So they would clear the party.
We just went back and adjusted the books, paid it back for last year, and what, five months of this year?
Five months, twelve months of last, the last fiscal year, and five months into this year.
So we're talking about close to a million bucks in paybacks on that?
Eight hundred, about eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, I believe it was. I mean, again, I have to look up the exact number.
It was theirs, not ours.
Yeah, it was theirs.
I, I got you. I understand what you're saying. Now, also, Tim, you had mentioned, there was a question that came up about the DHR, the maintenance on the DHR, the roof?
Yes.
Materials, now, you'd said that you wasn't sure, that you didn't know that if DHR had maintained the roof, is that, because there's a, there's some contract. I mean, there's a conflict in that, because you'd mentioned before that you didn't think DHR had changed out any of the roof or done compensating maintenance on it.
It may just now be time for a roof.
Yeah, it may just be time for a roof.
It's old, and, you know, shingles are good twenty-five, thirty years, depending on the type shingle you put on.
I'm just saying, if we're going to do, if we're going to, if we're going to do a maintenance, you know what I mean, we're going to give a price for, one price per square foot for no maintenance, one with maintenance? If we're going to do one with maintenance, we're not going to set our maintenance over to see, we're not going to just take it and then have to spend a ton of money, because they're supposed to be doing maintenance.
You think do X amount of dollars worth of work and expect not to have a roof?
Between three dollars, three dollars no maintenance, six dollars with maintenance.
Well, all of these past years has been one dollar.
Yeah, six have made off.
All these previous years have been one dollar.
Right, I got you.
They've done nothing to it, it doesn't look like.
So we're still on, we're talking about three dollars now, is what we're still on, right?
Yeah, that's what they paying right now.
Okay.
Hit it.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.